Uh, concert. Not because of Luke Bryan, but because of the stage.
Oh, yeah.
It's the coolest stage I've ever seen. But it was really cool on the bank screen. So I had a couple of them.
I keep threatening to like, well, get some popcorn and come over here with my kids and watch it. Pretty cool.
They're good, isn't it?
Yeah.
Not like a movie night?
Yeah. They don't have closed captioning on this, do they? So we're, we're streaming and ready whenever you are.
Okay. Welcome everyone to County Commission, Iron County Commission Meeting, Monday, the twenty-eighth day of February twenty twenty-two. And we will have a prayer from John Whitaker. And then George Coulson will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. We'll get started right there.
Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful this morning to be gathered here. In the context of a commission meeting, we are grateful for this land that we live in. We pray for the many souls who are in danger and afraid at this time. Please watch over and protect them and help us to, as always, be a good neighbor in the world and a good influence. We pray that thou will bless those leaders in the world with selflessness and courage to be able to do the right thing. We pray for the same this morning as we conduct this commission meeting, that it may be done in accordance with thy will and that thou will guide the commissioner's hands. We are so grateful for thy hand of providence in our little corner of the world. We love Iron County and we pray that thou will continue to bless this land where we live. We pray that thou will help us to be good citizens herein and help the county to continue to exhibit good governance. We pray for thy blessings to be upon us and we pray that thou will help us to move this meeting forward. And we ask for these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, John, and thank you, George. Can we get an approval on the minutes for the fourteenth?
I would move for approval of, God, I can't talk this morning. I would move for approval of, uh, or minutes from our February fourteenth meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Guess we got us all. Do we want to approve the, oh, should we, should we approve this one? Uh, this was a special commission meeting, uh, January fourteenth. We need a motion on it also.
Okay, I'll move to approve the minutes of the special January fourteenth County Commission Meeting.
Second.
Uh, moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approval of the claims for payment?
I move for approval of the claims for payment from February fourteenth, twenty twenty-two to February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okey dokey. We can move on to our reports. Clerk, John Whitaker.
Sorry, housekeeping. We had a water meeting in here and I didn't get them cleaned up, so. Uh, good morning, commissioners. Uh, I've kind of a brief report this morning. I wanted to go over a few things. We have had kind of an influx of passports and marriage licenses lately. That's been good. Um, we always laugh. Chanel and, um, Randy take Fridays off and Merrily and Jeannie take Mondays off. Jeannie on commission weeks will take Wednesdays. But that means, um, we're kind of short-staffed on Friday afternoon and it's like there's honeys on the door, man. We, we get big old families coming in for passports and we love it. And it's, it's not just Fridays. And so I, for whatever reason, there's, there's been an influx there. We're, uh, we're grateful for the expert way that, uh, our staff handles passports and, and we strive to provide good customer service. And, uh, we are, uh, probably more accommodating than some of the other passport offices around. With the, uh, the deliberation the commission has been making on the, uh, proposed jail facility and site, that has, uh, definitely, um, added to, uh, the, the burden in our office. Uh, we're glad to kind of be that clearinghouse for the comments that come in, the calls that come in. It's one of the things that, that my staff are, are unsung heroes, um, when it comes to things like this. During election time, uh, the, the amount of phone calls is astounding. And I am adamant that we don't have a person talk to a computer, but they talk to a person first thing. And, uh, my staff is, has to be well-versed in, in most of the areas of the county. And, um, they are kind of our first line of, of, of answering questions for folks. And I, I appreciate that. Uh, today is the first day of the filing period. Um, that affects a few of us in here, I think. Had a few folks come in already and file. Uh, that's been, uh, everybody wants to get their picture taken. I, I feel like a, I feel like a hog at the fair sometimes, but. Why don't you take your picture with somebody else? But anyway, I guess that's the thing to do. And, um.
I had no idea, but I'm in after this meeting.
We're going to the fair.
Want to reproduce this.
Can I hang a ribbon around your neck?
You can hang a bell around me. Anyway, uh, we, we, uh, we finished, uh, twenty twenty-one, um, within budget. There's, there might be a few more expenses still. Grateful for, uh, some of the adjustments that had to be made there under elections. We, um, with the legislature in session, uh, commissioners have been on a call and video this morning already. Um, and we have the same thing in our world when it comes to, uh, some of the elections, um, and, uh, marriage license and other, other things. We have to, sometimes in county government, we have to play defense when the legislature's in session, um, as, as you're well aware. And, uh, and so we try to bear our influence and, and spend our political capital wisely. Um, we have some tremendous folks, um, some of the other counties that are able to be at the legislator, legislature a little bit more. Um, I'm grateful for the relationship that I have with, uh, our local legislators. And, um, you know, oftentimes when it's time to talk to them, they'll reach out to me before I reach out to them. And, and I think that's tremendous to have those folks, you know, Rex and Evan and Brad and, and, um, Carl to be proactive like that. And I, I really do appreciate that and that they give a little bit of deference to, um, some of the folks that have to deal with that on the ground. There's been some tax bills that, that we've dealt with in our group and, and, um, certainly election bills. But, uh, we appreciate the good representation that we have, um, here in Iron County and in, in Southern Utah, so. That's all I have. Do you have any questions for me?
Feel like we talk a lot. There's not much. I don't think, I feel like we don't have very many secrets between.
Us and John.
And you.
I, I don't get to have my, all right, thank you.
Thank you, John. Human Resource, Jennifer.
Thank you. Thank you.
Wow, you've been busy.
It's been busy. So for budget, we closed out the twenty twenty-one year under budget and don't foresee any anticipated budget issues for this coming year, which is nice. Since the last HR report, we have posted, interviewed and hired nine full-time positions and seven part-time positions. We've got six full-time corrections deputies, two part-time assistant cooks, one in the Parowan and one in Cedar, um, COA offices. Two full-time deputies in the Sheriff's Office Patrol, one full-time administrative assistant in an engineer's office. One part-time Mills on Wheels driver in Parowan. One part-time DMV tech in Parowan Assessor's Office, one part-time building zoning code enforcement officer. One part-time secretary in, in the Sheriff's Office Patrol. One part-time evidence tech in the Sheriff's Department Patrol. Uh, two internal promotions within the Sheriff's Office Corrections, four internal promotions within the Sher- Sheriff's Department Patrol. One, um, internal promotion in the landfill. And then currently we are in the process of hiring one part-time activities director in Parowan COA. Two part-time road technician, maintenance workers, and one part-time Mills on Wheels driver in Parowan. And then we have several jobs posted right now, kind of hoping to get some recruitment. So points of interest, our turnover for twenty twenty-one was eighteen point one five or forty-five positions, which unfortunately is the highest that we've had on record. Um, for the first week in twenty twenty-two, the first couple of weeks, our turnover rate is two point four two or six positions. With the help of IT, we were able to obtain some new software, which has been so beneficial to us. It helps with our employee, um, employee recruitment, um, which has increased the applicant pool tremendously. So we're advertising for outside, um, social media platforms, which has been very nice. Um, our accident review board met a few weeks ago and we were able to cover and close out all of our accident claims for twenty twenty-one. So that was a good, a good burden to get off our shoulders.
Also, we have, we have a good time in those meetings.
We do. Oh, my goodness.
So, but we, we, we enjoy.
We may come up with a, a fun little hat for the next person who, um, who unfortunately comes encounter with a deer. So we're, we're gonna work on that.
We have a lot of, uh, what we call large dog incidents.
Yes, we do. That's probably the majority of what we have. So, um, Dan Arnoldson with, um, Workman's Comp, um, initiated a safety, safety culture assessment survey, which covers, um, safety culture of Iron County. And I want to thank all the employees who took part in that survey. And I have that with me if you guys are curious what the outcomes, um, what they feel like the best options for us are. We had some milestone anniversaries this quarter, celebrating five years, Stephanie Rainey in the Children's Justice Center, Brandon Kennedy in the Sheriff's Office Patrol, Sean Higgins in Sheriff's Office Corrections, and Commissioner Mike Blake. So congrats. And he got his plaque already, so. Jeremy Truman in the landfill is celebrating ten years.
Can I just say I, I appreciate, uh, Jen, she's, she's kind of, and it, it's a small thing, but it means a lot to people to have just a little bit of recognition and, and even just a little plaque is, I, I don't know. I, I think it's tremendous, so.
Well, you're welcome. I think it's great. I think this is such a great milestone for people, so I think it's important. So, um, Jeremy Truman, ten years, and twenty-five years, Mike Gibbs, in Sheriff's Office Corrections, which is amazing. It's a long time. And then I've got some graphs in the back, two pages, if you're just curious about employee turnover. Emod, um, increased a little bit this year, um, due to a couple of high accident claims that we've had over the past. So we're, we're working with our Workman's Comp, um, rep to, to hopefully get some educational tools out there so we can kind of get that down. So that's all I have. Do you have any questions for me?
I guess not, but we appreciate you, Jennifer. I know sometimes it's not real easy to work with us.
No, it's, I'm grateful, I'm grateful, thank you.
But we appreciate everything you do.
Same. Thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer.
Appreciate it.
Uh, Public Defender Shane isn't here, I guess.
We didn't hear from Shane. We weren't, he's normally good to respond and we weren't sure.
Okay. Uh, George, Emergency Management.
Hey, commissioners.
Morning.
I'm gonna cover, um, last year, kind of sum that up, and then what's happened so far this year. As far as budget, you've got two budgets in front of you, twenty twenty-one, and, and the current budget came in under budget again last year. And haven't, uh, that budget isn't quite up to date to twenty twenty-two, but I'm, I'm doing fine on the budget. So, um, as far as the budget goes, we're, we're good. Volunteer hours, last year, my emergency communications people put in eight hundred and sixty-five hours and six minutes. We have a CERT trailer, uh, Community Emergency Response Team, uh, trailer out there. In the front of it is, um, been set up for dispatch in case we lose the public safety building. Uh, I can actually put two dispatchers in the front of that. They've got radios. And I can actually run dispatch for public safety from this trailer. It had a little water damage, so we're completely rebuilding it and putting in insulation and a, and heat and cooling. So the dispatchers will be fine and had, had Zach out, looked at it. Uh, and we want to do an exercise at some point, uh, he does with, with his dispatchers, take a couple of them out and start dispatching from my trailer, uh, remotely, uh, for public safety in the county. We now have CERT teams in Old Iron Town and in Burl. They both have trailers and with some equipment, so we've got, uh, a lot more people, uh, signed up for CERT. COVID nineteen continues to be a thing with some people. The state, it has at least one call a week, um, on it. And I probably have, uh, ten thousand emails since, uh, March of, of, uh, twenty twenty. So, I mean, it's a huge thing. Um, we haven't been doing anything for it. Uh, I continue to provide masks to the court, uh, is the one, is the one COVID nineteen activity that I'm still in, involved in. So that's pretty much it. As far as floods for twenty twenty-one, uh, you know, we started with the train derailment out at Lund, um, which, um, Cedar Fire and I and actually the road department, we were on that for about, uh, probably over thirty hours. Uh, I got a call from Chief Phillips at nine o'clock in the evening and proceeded to call, uh, Preston at the time. We got light sets out there. We got all the equipment we needed, uh, thanks to the road crew. And, um, we worked that, not quite two weeks after that, we, the floods hit. And it was on for what about two or three weeks? Probably. We expended over a hundred thousand sandbags in the county. And as a rea- uh, as a result of this, when we started doing damage assessments, Washington County came up with a, um, application called Crisis Track that they had bought, uh, that did damage assessments. And as a result of that and using it, um, we went ahead as a region, uh, using federal, uh, regional, uh, grant money. Uh, I went ahead and, and got it for Iron County. We've already, um, Cedar Fire and I have been through the training. And so now, uh, and thanks to the assessor's office, we've got all of the county's, uh, information, all the homes and everything and their value loaded into this application. So when somebody goes out to do an assessment, a damage assessment, they can pull the house up. All they gotta do is put the, the, the address in, the house comes up with its value. And you put in how much damage and it'll tell you how much, uh, how much it's gonna cost to repair that home. So it's really, uh, and that was one of the, um, one of the, um, one of the results of, of our floods. Another result was that ENIC, um, when it was, uh, two weeks ago, held their first, um, Preparedness Fair. There's nothing like a disaster to get people's attention. And it was fairly well-attended, so I was there and my emergency communications people were there, uh, talking to people about disasters. Although we didn't get any money, we learned a lot of lessons, uh, from, you know, about how to, how to approach FEMA and what we're gonna need to go in the future. Training, um, I have, you've got the, uh, uh, you've got the, the list for the, um, uh, the ICS for elected officials there. We got twenty-five. I had to get twenty-five people signed up. Texas A&amp;M is coming in to do it. Uh, and they, uh, they said that that was, they were pleased that we were able to get twenty-five because a lot of jurisdictions are not able to meet that, and so they have to cancel. Uh, but we were able to meet that. You'll notice that we've got people coming from Kane County, Beaver County, Garfield County, Washington County. So many of them new mayors, new, uh, new councilmen. Um, you'll notice that, uh, Commissioner Blake's name is on there twice. Somehow, uh, John became Commissioner Blake number two.
Gosh, I'm sorry about that.
I apologize. That's, nobody wants this.
You'll notice that my name is on there twice, but there's a different number behind the name. Uh, that's because my son's a brand-new councilman in Kanab and he's coming over, um, with another one of his council members. So, um, that's not me twice. We did CERT this last weekend on, we trained, uh, about thirty more people, uh, for CERT. We had, uh, people from, uh, we're getting a reputation for training in Iron County. I had people from Sevier County, Beaver County, Kane County, Washington County up here doing CERT training with us. And as a matter of fact, some of them, and I'm not gonna say who, um, in Washington County said that they, they would rather work with us than their own county, but. I'm not gonna tell my counterpart down in Washington about that, so. Uh, exercises, we've, uh, my emergency communication people did two exercises last year, uh, spring and a winter. And they did, they've done their winter one already again, um, this year. Uh, and it proved that we're ready to communicate no matter what happens, no matter what disaster. Uh, Iron County can talk to the world, uh, if need be, uh, with the equipment and with the trained people that I've got, so. Uh, and that's unique in this region. We're the only county that really, um, I mean, Washington County does have a group, but they're nowhere near as where my people are. We can send, we can actually send, uh, printed material over, uh, ham radios. And so we're, we're ready to communicate even if, even in the worst-case scenario. So that's pretty much it. Any questions?
No.
Thank you very much. Yeah, that's great.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go back to the Public Defender, Shane.
Sorry I'm late. Usually I'm a little later on the list, but glad to be up. So we are doing trials again pretty consistently. Um, we're on our third one in a row for three weeks in a row right now, so we're able to get them going pretty consistent. Um, we have a, a good system for COVID questionnaires, so we can address any COVID issues early with trial going. We are staying within our budget. As anticipated, we are using a little more of the budget as trials are ramping up. And so some of the budget is, is being used in preparation for trials as we anticipated. And then Commissioner Cousins has asked that we put together a Excel spreadsheet with active, um, case lists. And Shelby, our new legal assistant, has been diligently putting cases into that. Uh, we have it formatted up and running, and so now she's just getting it current. And so you should have access to that soon.
Oh, good, good.
But outside of that, things are going well on the defense side. I, I feel like we are, um, making headway with the backlog, given the, uh, fact that trials are, are proceeding again, so. Outside of that, nothing else to report unless you have any questions. Well, thank you.
That's good. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm gonna take off. I've got court today, so.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Okay, well, we'll go to Fleet. Wade.
Thanks, Wade.
Thank you.
So good morning. At least, uh, just a few points of what's been, what's been happening. So last year, our budget, we were well, well under. Couldn't get any vehicles, so. Establishing the department, that's what I've been working on the most, getting all the accounts set up, purchasing some tools and some of the equipment to get going. Roof repair on that old shop. Roof repair on that old shop seems to be not leaking.
Oh, good.
So after that last storm, I haven't noticed any leaks in it yet, especially the one big one that was around the exhaust vent or the welding bay, so that's a plus. We ordered a hoist, it came in last week, so we'll work on getting that installed. The tire vandalism last week.
I was going to ask you about that. You're probably in charge of that, huh?
We had one vehicle affected.
We were lucky.
The city had sixty tires.
How many?
Sixty.
Sixty.
So I thought we had one, so I was just up there this morning going to put that other tire back on, the front tire on that same side's flat.
Oh, is it really? It wasn't?
No, it wasn't.
It was this morning.
A little bit of a mark there.
We saw it this morning. I just figured you hadn't got to it yet.
There's a little bit of a mark there that I noticed, and it must have just been a slow leak.
Must have got a slow leak on that one.
Yeah, so I called the chief police, and I says, hey, he's been back. So we had two tires, so.
Well, I went up Tuesday night. I'd moved the truck from the third level down to the second just because they were going to clean it, and then I got thinking, we're going to be in legislature, so it'll need to be moved, and I've got the keys, or we've all got keys, we'll be, so I ran up, moved it Tuesday night, thank goodness, right? Or we might have gotten hit.
It probably would have because all of those up there on third.
It was probably a blessing we moved a bunch of them out.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, in fact, I'm talking to Terry and Nate and Lester, they'd moved all of their vehicles out and over behind their office for the cleaning.
Yeah, thank goodness.
That's where I took the county truck we used.
Yeah, so all of those were, yeah, we only had, it was just Rich's truck, wasn't it?
Was it Rich's?
Reed's.
Oh, that's what I meant, Reed. Yeah, Reed's truck.
Reed usually parks it up by ass on the third, but obviously hit.
It was down there, but we had two other, the two pooled vehicles, the two, the Camry and the Intrepid were down there right next to it, but they didn't.
They didn't get them.
They didn't get them, so.
It looked like regular vehicles.
Did your tire, did you get, did your tires get it, Danny? Yeah, I thought I saw, oh, they got Danny's ride.
Oh, that was terrible, but they did catch him, I guess, right?
Yeah, I'll tell you, I go, I'll.
You got a little spill?
It was pretty entertaining.
All right.
So the state fuel network, so we've got that going, we've been activated. We're supposed to receive the cards this week, so we'll get that all sent out and show everybody where they can go to get that fuel. We talked, we had a meeting with him last week, me and August did, and Ali on some training, and they were showing us some of the averages, fuel prices, and it was around two seventy, I think, for gas and diesel.
Oh, wow.
Gasoline, we're going to have an immediate savings, you know, if we start using those state fuel sites, so.
Well, that's awesome.
So I'm excited about that.
Did you say you were going to generate a map of other locations outside of Iron County?
They actually have one. We'll show you guys where to go. They have a map and all the state.
It's online.
In the state.
It's online, so we can.
Yep. Motor Pool, so that's up and running. Got a Fleet page on the county website at the bottom. You can go on there to reserve a vehicle. Also added a button on there for the surplus, so you can go right there to look at the surplus, vehicles that are being auctioned off. Key boxes, they're almost done. Got one installed at the visitor center. We got to test it, and then we're going to get the other one installed here and the one at the Justice Center.
There'll be exterior key boxes?
So they're actually in the interior, so they're, the one at the Justice Center's going to be in the break room.
Oh.
The one here is by the break room, across from the clerk's office, and then the one at the visitor center's actually back there by IT, that you go in, you go into the IT room, not the IT room, but you go into that hallway, walk past the IT, and then there's another door that's just a hallway, and it'll be in there, so just kind of some neutral areas you can access, so. Our first vehicle order from last May, so we've received nine of the twenty-nine that we ordered, and talking with him last week, it looks like it's getting pushed back to May. First it was October, then it was January.
It's back to May now.
Yeah, we received, we received just a couple last week, but I don't know if it's bad service or if it's, I'm pretty sure it's just the, with everything else that's going on right now with the supply chain and the chips and things, so. Started listing some of the fire surplus that we had, that we brought in from Burl, Modena, and I'll be putting more of that, more of that on there, some of the other vehicles that I've had brought in from the sheriff's department, and we've been getting a few hits on some of that older stuff, some of it hasn't been done yet, but it's pretty old and pretty rough, so. The other thing I've been trying to do is help out some of the other departments. I've told them that as time allows, I'll help them with their maintenance and issues like that, and it's been nice to be able to do that. I've got some examples on here just of some of the costs that we've saved, but Sheriff's Department had a vehicle that they needed stripped down, the equipment stripped down, so we could send it to the jail for a K-9 vehicle, and so PVI from Salt Lake, they charged seven hundred dollars to take all that out, and that doesn't include getting it there and bringing it back, and so I was able to do that in less than nine hours, so it was about four hundred dollars, so. Just those are pretty good savings, and then we had a, one of the patrol cars, it was, had a thermostat issue. Cedar Motor Company wanted four hundred dollars to replace that, and so it took me less than an hour to do that, so it was, it was under a hundred dollars, so. Search and Rescue had an issue with their Snowcat, the seat safety switch, the backup alarm, and they needed a horn installed, and so to outsource that, they actually went and got a quote on that, which was around five hundred dollars, and we were able to do it for about three, so. Another, another issue that we've had with the van at the jail, they have a brake issue with, they think it's the calipers. They were told it was the calipers, and they said it was going to be around five hundred dollars to replace the front calipers, but we're not sure that that's what the problem is, so we're actually going to look at it a little bit more and see if we can troubleshoot it, and so it doesn't just cost us that large amount, you know, you take it somewhere else and they're just going to keep replacing stuff. When we can look at it, keep it a little bit longer and figure it out, because we could actually get those road returned for a fraction of the cost if we need to, so. I've had to turn a lot of stuff away just because of time and then, but I've been able to help out some of them. I've been trying to use the road department mechanics as much as I could, you know, they're pretty busy, so. Keeping track of all the work orders and costs and all that stuff, so we can look at the savings down the road, so we can kind of see moving forward, so. Other than that, that's all I've got. You guys have any questions?
I just had a thought. Wade, you know where we, on that third floor, where we park, you know, Reed and that truck we use is parked? What if we put all of our county vehicles up in that corner, that area, so they're all together?
Yeah, I mean, I don't have a, I don't have a problem with that. I've had some, I actually did mention that to some of the other departments that are over there, and the only thing they issued they had was, really not an issue, I guess, it's just when you're packing a bunch of stuff, they said the elevator doesn't always work, but they just have to go over and get the vehicle and then go back over to their office, which is probably, like you said, it's probably better.
Just rather have them scattered all over, maybe have them all.
Well, that, and then they're covered, so you don't have the sun damage or that type of thing. I think that's probably.
There's not as much traffic up there too, I guess, as much, so.
Well, they need to get cameras. That's probably a huge thing that, because when we've been up there, there's been vandalism going on. You can see kids up there messing around and skateboarding, and so there's an issue up there, but there probably is over the other place, too.
That's the other issue that I heard, too, is they throw stuff off the top, and then it goes down and lands in the bottom levels, too.
Problem, yeah.
So it'd be better to probably get up a little higher, so I don't have an issue with that, so. Hey, thanks.
Thanks, Wade. I just wanted to tell Wade a special thanks for saving this money, you know, I really feel like that Wade's the right guy for this job. We've talked about that many times, so. Okay, then. Danny Stewart, Economic Development.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Happy to be here. It's surprising how quickly these months slip by, and it's time to be here again. Few things I just wanted to update you about. I gave you a handout this morning with two sides to it. We'll just go through a few points. If you have any questions, feel free to jump in. We had a groundbreaking for American Packaging Corporation. This is a manufacturing company out of the Midwest. They have locations in Wisconsin, New York State, and Iowa. This is their first venture into the West. They produce, they print onto flexible packaging materials, so if you buy bagged products in the supermarket or, they produce for the food industry, for medical industry, for lots of companies all over the country and throughout the world, and we're excited to have them here. They wanted to come out West, have closer access to the markets here. We're in an optimal place for that. We're within a day's trucking, and our rail is, was really appealing to them. They can bring in materials on the rail and ship out their finished products on truck to, primarily to Southern California, Phoenix, Las Vegas, Salt Lake, Denver, so. They'll be a good neighbor, they're very family-oriented and a good fit for the community. They'll be bringing or creating about a hundred and thirty-five new jobs over, for several years of being here. They're already talking potential for a second expansion. This is out in Port Fifteen on the north side of the railroad tracks, across the street from the Go-X building, which is nearing completion as far as the exterior goes, so. If you haven't been out to Port Fifteen for a while, head out there and you can see that tilt-up building for Go-X, and they're pushing dirt for the American Packaging, so. The map that's on this, you see Port Fifteen as that area outlined in red. That's the sitla and private property that was compiled as Port Fifteen back in two thousand and six and seven. You'll notice a large green outline there. That is going to be known, or is now officially known, as the Commerce Crossroads Logistics Park. The owners of BZI and Realign Steel have purchased that property. First for them is to expand their operations out there to get rail access, to be able to unload the steel products that they need for their business. They'll also be building new facilities out there. They plan to use about a hundred acres of that. The remainder of that, I think there's about between twenty and forty acres that will be designated for rail transloading that can be used by third-party areas throughout southwest Utah. That's extremely important for our vision with the Utah inland port, to be able to get a regional transload facility. Currently today, everybody that utilizes rail are manufacturers that have a direct hookup to the rail, so we get great use. That's a tremendous asset for us, but to open up that third party, that means a lot of companies will be able to get in and out and get products on and off the rail, which will be good. We're excited to see that. If you turn the sheet over on the back, you can kind of see a rough design of potentially what could happen there. That colored area up in the top corner right here, that is the BZI property that they will be working on. The others are proposed and probably won't end up looking like that, except for the road access and the BZI, but that, those properties are now available, and we're marketing those to manufacturers, distributors who are interested in the area, so we'll have that in addition to Port Fifteen, which we're really excited about. That leads us to the Utah inland port. As I mentioned, what these folks are doing ties into our strategy for having some inland port operations with the transloading. We've also been working with Frank Nichols and other companies that are looking at the loop loading site west of Iron Springs, north and west of there by those big solar projects. Proposed use there is to be able to load coal from Alton Coal and other minerals, potentially use that. We're working with inland port authority now, looking at next steps on how to proceed with the construction of that loop track. Rural County Grant Program, you may remember a couple of years ago, the Governor's Office of Economic Opportunity created this program for rural counties to use. We've been able to use that to help fund a few things here in the county, including the Business Innovation Center. The, trying to remember the title of it, Craig Isom's Entrepreneur Grant. We're able to match that. We'll be able to apply again in June for this, and we're currently, I'm working with the Business, Small Business Development Center, the Women's Business Center of Utah, are partners at the Innovation Center to create a small business grant. When GoEd created this program, they also took a few programs out, and one of those was called a Rural Fast Track Grant. We were able to utilize that in the past to help companies in Bryan Head and Enoch and Parowan and other places to be able to get grants, matching grants, to help them purchase equipment and create new jobs, and we're looking at following that layout and utilizing these funds to have an Iron County-specific business grant that's tied to small businesses that are ready to take that next step. Garfield County, several other counties have been doing the same thing. We're working together to create a grant that allows businesses, as they're investing, that they can potentially qualify for some grant funding there. Also, that Rural County Grant comes in a Part A and Part B. The Part A is what I was talking about with the business grant. Part B is competitive. You may recall, six to nine months ago, we got the commission's approval to seek funding for infrastructure on Main Street and Cedar City. We were granted that, three hundred thousand. It's Phase One to start putting the electrical underground and bringing that up to more modern standards so that development can happen there. We had some developers with a match for that. We have to have a forty percent match at least, and these private builders were able to come up with that, and we were awarded that. We'll be working on upgrading that infrastructure in the next few months. It's interesting, as buildings have gone in, there's really some antiquated electrical things that are, they're inadequate and even potentially dangerous for some of the businesses down there, so we're looking at bringing all of that up to date in phases as we can qualify. Wanted to bring you up to date with business recruiting efforts. This has been an extremely busy year. We've replied to about a dozen requests for information that come through EDC Utah. Keep us pretty busy. They'll send us a packet that comes from a company or a site selector, and they're looking for, you know, potential locations in the West generally. We respond along with a lot of communities in Utah and other states in the West. The American Packaging Project was a result of one of these requests for information. Some of them go relatively quickly, like American Packaging did. That was about a nine-month deal. Others, not so fast. Go-X was about eighteen to twenty months to finish that, but it's, it's nice to see that we're getting some interest in that. We've got a couple in particular that keep coming back to us for more information. One is a large-scale data center. They claim to be a low-water-use data center. The other is an aerospace manufacturing project, so we'll keep you up to date as those progress or if they progress. We send a lot of information, and some of these things take years to come to fruition. Retail recruitment. Part of what we used that Rural County Grant for this last year was to have access to a retail analytics program called Buckston. It helps us analyze what our true retail market area is. Part of the difficulty in recruiting retail is we don't qualify for traditional retail requirements. We don't have a million residents or a hundred thousand residents within a fifteen-minute drive time, so this helps us identify what our actual market is. It shows that we are more of a regional commercial center, and we're getting some great data there and working on providing some information to some retail interests. Also preparing to attend the ICSC Retail Convention in Las Vegas. That's the International Council of Shopping Centers. That will allow us to hopefully make some good connections as far as potential retail recruitment goes. So those are the main things we're working on. Any questions?
Sounds great.
You've been busy.
Yeah, it has been busy, for sure. Appreciate all your support and everything. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we go on to Commission Report.
Okay, now we go on to Commission Reports. Mike, would you like to go first?
Sure, whatever you say. I, I appreciate Danny and all of his efforts on the economic development front. It's fun to be on that committee and to work so closely with them because things really are hopping. It's, it's really encouraging to, it's encouraging to see that growth and how well it's, you know, being planned for. And that's just really cool to see some of that, you know, high-quality stuff that's happening there. Specifically, you know, this last little bit, I've been working with Senator Vickers on getting some state funding approved for that transload, transload road. There's some state, there's some, I should say, there's some potential state funding to help with that infrastructure into that facility so that the, we can build that transload facility. That's, I've been working on that with, with Senator Vickers. I've had a, I had a meeting with Don Jersey from the Shakespeare Festival. I, I've had a couple of meetings with Don in the, in the last couple of weeks. They've done a lot of real, Don's a nerd and self-prescribed, self, self-
Identified.
Identified as a, as a nerd. But he's run, he's got all of these statistics of, you know, markets and where people are coming from and what people are spending. And he's really using, wants to use a lot, share a lot of their data to help us with tourism and to help us with economic development. They're really passionate to grow the, the festival, but also grow our community as well. That's, that's really a focus from the festival. And so we've met, I've met with Don, Maria. We've had several meetings with SUU and just trying to kind of come up with a coordinated effort so that everybody's supporting each other and not, everybody's not going in ten different directions. We're really trying to consolidate some of that. The Big Chamber, Big Chamber of Commerce has got all the legal paperwork done, gotten incorporated and is now working on a monthly schedule. There'll be a monthly meeting with trainings. That's moving forward. So just one other thing that kind of parlay's off of the Chamber. We were able to, back when, in the flooding, there was a big community effort to fundraise. And there was a huge fundraising effort and people didn't necessarily know what they were raising funds for. But they raised a lot of money and helped a lot of people. When all of that was said and done, well, back then when we were specifically talking about twenty-three hundred west, was it twenty-three hundred, twenty-three hundred west, about six thousand north, those issues there. I approached the fundraising group just to see if they had any funds that could kind of help us fix that road and remove that kind of, that stuff there. They recently came back and they do have some funds left over. I think we've talked about that a little bit. I've talked to Dan about it, but they're going to, and it's not necessarily the Chamber. The Chamber's one cog in that wheel of all that fundraising. But they're going to provide us with the remaining funds from that account to help with some of the infrastructure. So that's pretty cool. I was excited about that. We've all spent a lot of time on, on mostly Zoom calls with the legislature, with USAC. Specifically, I've done work on House Bill Twelve, which is a retirement issue with law enforcement. I've been working pretty closely with the Utah Sheriff's Association on that type of thing. There's been several others. Working towards the airport fall open house. We need to loop Danny. I'm going to give Danny another to-do list. We've talked about this a little bit, but we've kind of moved forward with a committee and some different folks in there. We're going to loop Danny in to not only bring recognition to the airport, but also trying to recruit and at least make, make information available for aeronautic-type businesses to come in. They've got some ideas there. I've coordinated with Gold Cross Ambulance this last little bit just to make sure that we've, there were some questions about coverage in Burl. I, I think we've got those issues worked out, but I'm going to reach out next meeting and have, see if we can get John Miller. He's the regional coordinator, or I don't know what his title is. He's the regional boss for Gold Cross. He's going to come and report to us. I'm going to try and get that set up for next meeting and have John come in and talk to us. Burl Fire, we've actually, their responses are up and they're, they've actually been manning fire truck. We've actually been getting, getting a response. Some of those efforts out there to, to recruit and retain, retain and just give them a little bit of, little bit of hope seem to be paying off. We've, we've had some better response out of Burl Fire. I met with Jennifer Davis to follow up on the, the new build project with the Children's Justice Center just to make sure that things are moving forward, not stagnant there. She's on that. My phone blew up in the middle of the night, the other night. There was a broken water line at the Children's Justice Center. Nate Dennett and I spent a few hours. We basically shoveled all the snow off of their lawns. We shoveled all the lawn, trying to get access to where we needed. We've got a temporary fix. It was a sprinkler issue, not an in-house issue. So, but that was a comedy of errors. I fell at one point, was laying on my back and like a turtle, trying to get up on the ice. I had to get up before Nate could get his phone out.
Turn off the sprinklers?
What's that?
They not-
Turn off the sprinklers?
There's no, we can't find a stop and waste valve anywhere on that property.
Really?
Oh, my.
No, I mean-
Probably should be installed.
We've searched high and low. So I, the, the history, the Kiwanis Club installed the sprinklers in nineteen ninety-eight or two thousand. I don't remember the date. Anyway, twenty years ago, the, yeah, we, we're not sure where the water comes from. We, we can't, we, we finally got the, the dub, I can't remember what it's called, the double whatever valve. We finally dug down and got it shut off. But there doesn't appear to be a stop and waste valve anywhere on the property. And we're not even sure where the water main comes in. We couldn't find it. So in the spring, we'll address it in the springtime.
I can't believe it's taken this long.
And it was the day, I mean, there was literally over a foot of snow that, and we shoveled all the grass. We shoveled all the rocks. Dug out a bunch, dug out the rocks.
Oh, wow.
It's good times, but we got her shut off. Just the slashed tires the other morning. I had an appointment with Dave Evans at the Police Department. He called and says, I'm going to be late some, there was a few expletives in there, slashed our tires. So I thought, well, I better go check on our county vehicles. And we just found that one, one tire on Reed's. Actually got a call and I, I really, I had nothing to do with this, but I kept up on it through the day, which was kind of interesting. They got a call from a lady that says, hey, I dropped my son off there in the middle of the night because he has court in the morning. Dropped him off at like three in the morning and he said he was going to, you know, blow up the government, basically. And so he was in court at nine AM.
After he'd already done all that stuff.
Yeah, so they caught him. He didn't, he immediately lawyered up and didn't say anything. They held him, got a cert, they've got a search warrant. They found some of, a bag over at the library with his property in it. They went through the whole search warrant process. They got things, at the end, when they didn't have any evidence of the tire slashing, but they did have evidence of other crimes. They went to take him to jail. He broke free, punched a couple of officers in the face. They, you know, tackled him, got him under control, were taken to jail. And as a parting shot, he's like, and I am glad I slashed all your tires. So they got like an excited utterance confession after he'd lawyered up.
I'll bet his lawyer was happy.
Yeah, that's not, it's pretty tough to defend that. Anyway, but they, they, I want to give kudos to the Cedar City Police Department. I mean, they really, they jumped on that and had that wrapped up within a day. Well, we, you know, those are crimes that you just never solve sometimes.
A lot of times, never.
Yeah, a lot of times, that's just, you never solve it. That was great. They did a really good job on that. That's, I, I will end there.
Okay.
In the interest of time.
Okay, we'll let Paul have a shot.
All right, so last, this last week, they had the Nata Association of Counties Legislative Day on the Hill. Commissioner Wood and I, and actually our spouses went up. We, and we gave Sarah, Sarah, Cindy, Sarah Patterson's ride up that morning. But we left about five-thirty Wednesday morning.
The roads were not good.
It was ugly.
That was the night following. I'd gotten all the blowups, the waters, we're, we're out, we're going to die in the flood at the CJC. So I opted to stay back.
Thank you, thank you. It was, it was a nasty drive up.
It was a nasty drive.
So, but spent Wednesday, Thursday, Friday morning, had a great time. We, Mayor Green and his wife came up, Commissioner, or Councilman Melling with Cedar City Council, Councilman Ron Riddle and his spouse came up. And, and we had some great meetings. We met with Senator Vickers, Representative Ship, worked on quite a few things. The, the, a couple, we, we met with Senator Vickers about the West Desert Pipeline, trying to lobby for funding for that. I don't know that we've made any progress there yet. We also worked a lot on, I worked a lot on the House Bill Two Forty-two, the secondary water metering, where they're trying to regulate any, any community that has pressurized secondary water, water system. They're trying to require meters. The challenge, and I applaud the state for trying to do that and, and conserve water, but for some of these smaller systems, it's a challenge because their water is dirty. It's not filtered and these, these water meter companies, a lot of them will not warranty those meters because it is dirty water. So they're, they're, we're hoping to see them do a carve-out for systems that have dirty water to where they can be exempted from that requirement and, and maybe do more of a conversation, conservation, more of a voluntary conservation as a city. Like for instance, if Parowan, the Forbay of the Canyon and, and Mayor Haldeman was up there with Sam, her husband, testifying to this bill, you know, they, they say, hey, if you want a thirty or forty or fifty, whatever percent reduction in our secondary water use, we can meter it coming out of the Forbay, up, up the canyon, going to Bryan, Bryanhead and, and fulfill that requirement without millions and millions of dollars installing water meters that might have to be uninstalled in the fall, reinstalled in the spring because of freeze thaw. So that's, that's a, that's one. The other, the other exemption they might look at is, is if they're going through, if a community is going through a groundwater management plan with a state engineer, they might look at a carve-out for that as well. So that's still in the works. It's going, going to the Senate soon. We've, like I said, we've talked to Senator Vickers on that one and Brian Steed with the Department of Natural Resources. And so we worked a lot on that. Let's see, what else? Carter Enterprises, they're starting the Fairgrounds Lab and going to try to get that ready May first so that our bleachers can be installed. I talked to the bleacher company, Tom, with them and, and getting, he's getting really booked up in the summer. So we're trying to get that work done so he can come install those bleachers and be ready for our fair. One other quick thing, I, Dan, do you want to, we bought a dump truck for Curtis. And appreciate Dan and, and Rich Wilson, our engineer, getting online. And I think we did pretty good. I mean, they had a, how many trucks were for sale, Dan? A hundred trucks and they were real, a lot of brand-new ones, a lot partially used, some with a lot of miles, but- Yeah, so we really need a truck bad and we, we had to go through this auction to get a truck. We paid more than we wanted to, but comparatively to the other folks that bid and, and were successful in the bidding, I think we did really well. So we ended up with that. We're also looking at, at, at trading in Curtis's excavator track hole. The tracks are worn out and we're looking, looking at that process right now as well. Bruce is helping us with that, Bruce Anderson.
One of the things that Dan said about that was that it's a forty-yard truck, not the typical seventeen that we have. Is that right? Yeah, so.
Right, right.
That's a possibility.
We're following, there's a House Bill Four Seventy-six that came out last minute, last, actually last Thursday evening that was introduced. It's a local ag regulation. In fact, I've had it up on the screen. We were watching that before the meeting started today. There was a House Bill Two Fifty-three, which was the KFO legislation that we fought against. And, and that bill was pretty much killed. We're worried that this HB Forty-seventy-six might be an end run around that. So we're watching that really close. That just came up. I was texting last night till about eleven-thirty last night. I apologize for those I texted late.
Reed was probably watching, listening to that right now, coming walking in.
Reed, Reed is watching that. Maybe he can give us a little update on that too. And then, and then we're, Newcastle Fire Station, the plans are moving along. That should be out to bid soon. Reed, when, when were you guys hoping to put that up to bid, the fire station? You remember? It doesn't matter, but it's going to be soon. Next week, yeah, within a week or so.
We're having a meeting this coming Tuesday.
Right.
And we're replying, the drawing, make sure it's ready to go. And then I'll go out to bid within two weeks after.
One last thing, I serve on the Five County Association Government Boards. One of the boards I serve on is the Human Services Council. And we need a representative from Iron County to serve on that board. And I wanted to get my fellow commissioner's blessing. I asked Derek Morton if he would be willing to serve on that because he's so involved in intergenerational poverty and with low-income housing and things. He's been a real advocate for that and I thought he'd be a perfect fit. I reached out to Derek and he said he would be willing to serve. Are you two okay with that?
Absolutely.
Okay, so, so we'll go ahead and, and he said he would do that. So we'll go ahead and put him on that board. So that's one. John, you might want to add to our list.
Okay, and yeah, and it's really not that big of a deal, but we do have that boards under non-delegated that we can do that under. And, and in fact, maybe I would suggest that when we get to that point of the meeting-
Actually vote on it.
Take action.
Okay, perfect. It's not on the agenda, but we can do that.
It's under the non-delegated as boards.
So we can do that, okay.
So whenever you have one, feel free to, to, to bring that up and, and it's okay to bring it up here. It's just, but that's kind of the official unofficial place where you can vote for that.
Thank you.
That way-
Remember to bring that up.
That's all I have.
Okay, they actually left me something. I can't believe it. Usually they take it all and then I don't have anything to say. So on the fifteenth, Paul and I went, ran out to Enterprise, the Burl Groundwater Management Plan people, the farmers out there, had a meeting out there and we was able to meet with them. And it, it's just fun to, you know, get to know them, see what their issues are, you know, see if there's anything that we can do to help with, with their issues. And, and they, they do have, they're, you know, they're up against it. They're going to, they're losing, going to lose water, you know, down the road. So, and then that evening, we, we went over to the Parowan City Council and they had a town hall. And of course, they, they're talking about the pool that they want to do. They've got some real challenges there for a small town like this to, you know, to, to put in a, that big of a facility. There's some real challenges, but, but, you know, they're, they're pushing forward with it and, and they'll decide what they need to do with that. But they ask us to come and talk about the fairgrounds and just an update on what we're doing. We've, we've had the road crew over there. Of course, then the snow came, so we had to go push snow. But they're starting to take the racetrack out there on the, on the front of the property, on the west side of the property there. And we'll, we'll make a huge big parking lot in the front end there. It'll probably double the parking by taking that part out, which we were very challenged with, with not enough parking during the fair. And so we'll, we'll move forward with that. We'll need to put some fencing in and, and we're moving forward with, we're going to have a new fair director that we'll hire. That'll close on March twenty-fourth and a part-time maintenance, fair maintenance person, which will be really good too. And that one also closes. So if anyone's interested in that one, those two positions, that'll be really good because we're going to need those for the, for the, you know, going forward with that. Um, on the twenty-first, uh, the Heritage Festival had a Lincoln Day Dinner, uh, at the Elks, Elks Lodge. They served lamb, which is always a treat. Um, and I just wanted to give a shout out to Sheriff Ken Carpenter, which spoke about, um, uh, animal rights and animal, you know, the, the ranchers being able to get their, uh, animals moved around the valley and their rights and the fence out and fence in laws. And, and he did a really great job. When he started talking about agriculture like that, boy, the place just went silent. It was, it was really good. Um, we also had the, um, town hall on the twenty-second at Festival Hall at five o'clock. Um, John and Mike cooked.
I forgot all about that.
That was, I know it.
That was, that seems like a long time ago.
And it was awesome. They had, uh, pulled pork and, and on, on little buns and, and chips and drinks and cake and it was, it was wonderful. And, and, you know, the, the, uh, uh, meeting that we had had before, um, talking about the jail, getting the information out, I think that's really helping. And, and I think, you know, our, our meeting, our town hall meeting was a different tone. And I, I think it was really good. We, I appreciate everybody that came and helped with that. Um, one more thing, um, the cleanup, uh, on March ninth on Highway fifty-six again, uh, you can go to justserve.org to get more information about that. But, um, I think they're gonna have another one of those cleanups, it's on a Saturday.
That's March ninth?
March ninth. They changed it because of conference.
I thought I put that on my calendar last night and I don't see it. March ninth, okay.
Yep, so.
It's a Wednesday.
Oh, it's a Wednesday?
Yeah, so.
Well, that's what she texts me.
Is this?
May, oh, maybe it is April ninth. Oh, that's what it was. It, she pushed it. It is, it is, that is April.
Oh, I had it April second is what I had.
Yeah, it, it was then, but I guess that's conference. I think she said.
Changed again then?
Yeah.
Back to the ninth of April?
April ninth, yeah. Okay, I'm glad you realized I was on the wrong day. Okay, well, um, that, um, let's take just a, no, ten-minute break and then we'll come back with our regular meeting. We went a little long, but, um, alrighty.
None of you were here, so I'm not saying I focused.
Switch that. Commissioner, I'm ready whenever you are.
Okay. Are we on then?
We are rolling.
Okay. We'll get started with our ten o'clock meeting, a little late, twenty after, but we'll get going. Number one is a public hearing discussion and possible approval of the road dedication subdivision. Sage Hill Drive, also referred to as Iron Springs Properties, three parcels located near Iron Springs Road and Sage Hill Drive, Cedar City, Utah, approximately one hundred and twenty acres. Reed Erickson.
Good morning, Commissioners. Appreciate it. I don't know why it's not moving. It's kind of locked. It's really slow to ever load. And it won't advance.
Do you want to try and just run it through this machine, maybe? Oh, there you go.
There it went.
A start. It just did it. Did you do that?
It was not me.
Caught up. This is a road dedication subdivision, as you're aware. This is a subdivision option that we have to just create remainder parcels when we do a road, when the road separates physically the parcel. So this parcel, as you see it here on the map, was one parcel of one hundred and twenty acres, and yet it's divided by the Iron Springs Road and the Sage Drive, Sage Hill Drive. And so what they want to do is be able to sell off one of, portion of those lots. And this allows the property owner to divide without having to do all of the subdivision improvements, which are typically required. Water, sewer, road infrastructure, it exists on a county road. The roads are improved to the county standard on both cases for Iron Springs Road and Sage Hill Road. So in this case, the subdivision would simply create three remainder parcels. And I'm just gonna run through, these, both items on the agenda here are both road dedication subdivisions. And so as you can see here, under the ordinance, a road dedication subdivision may or may not be required to provide subdivision improvements, typical of subdivisions that are dividing property into multiple lots. This is just dividing remainder lots, remainder parcels, and typically we defer. And so the road, the infrastructure improvements. And then so in this case, I will specifically point out which infrastructure requirements we're asking to be deferred until such time as further subdivision or a building permit is sought for one of the lots. And that's typically what we do with these road dedication subdivisions. You can see that this is located just off of Iron Springs Road, just past the Desert Mound Turnoff. So you can see here, this is a zoning map that shows the area and where the star is, is that one hundred and twenty acre parcel. So it's just before you get to the commercial property of the Iron Springs Adventure Resort, just after you turn off of the Desert Mound Road to the left there, and below the star. So you can see the property is all zoned currently industrial. This is just a land ownership showing that it's all private all around it. BLM is a ways away on all cases, the same with Sittler Property. The three parcels that would be created is the eighty-five acre, twenty acre, and fifteen acre, surrounded by industrial. They can, they have a water letter from the Conservancy District that when water is available, they'll be able to hook onto that. And that's their interest in trying to bring water to that area, and this will, will help facilitate that. There is no sewer in the area, but the fire flow can then be provided by the Central Iron County Water Conservancy District. Have good transportation there, and drainage isn't an issue. So the only deferment that we would have on this is for, as identified on the plat right here. This is the note number one that we put on these plats. The utility improvement will not be part of the road dedication subdivision, will be deferred until building permit is pulled for each lot. Water and sewer septic will be deferred until the time of building permit. And this would also apply to any further subdivision, of course, because it wouldn't be a road dedication subdivision at that point. So with that introduction, we require a public hearing. I will mention that the Planning Commission did hold a public hearing as well and recommended approval of this subdivision.
Okay. Chair declares the public hearing open. Have any comments? Oh, Chair declares the public hearing closed.
All right.
Reed.
So this is language specifically out of the ordinance where it talks about the deferral and that they, what they may do. And the Planning Commission has recommended approval. These are the requirements that are in the industrial zone. So asphalt pavement, one of the discussions that we had, as you see here in the industrial zone, asphalt pavement is required. And the road of Sage Hill Drive is not paved currently. And so that would be a deferred requirement until that lot that served access by that road would be paved at the time a building permit would be required. So the applicant is aware of that, and they're aware of any. So the deferments that we're asking for is the central water, fire suppression, and fencing. All other things would be required now, and then those things would be required at a later time. A time of building permit or subdivision.
Okay. Chair, call for a motion.
Is it my turn?
Sure.
Okay, I will move to approve the Sage Hill Drive, which is also referred to as Iron Springs Properties, three parcels located near Iron Springs Road and Sage Hill Drive, Cedar City. And it's approximately one hundred and twenty acres, and, and as per the description in the agenda. And to just note that that's, meets the requirements of the Planning Commission and the deferments that they're allowing are the central water, the fire suppression, and the fencing. Does that cover it, Reed?
Second.
Moved to seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 I will just mention, if you allow me, on this one, the reason that it has two names, Iron Springs Properties and Sage Hill Drive. The, the actual subdivision now will be recorded as Sage Hill Drive. But when it started, and we advertised for a public hearing and went through the Planning Commission, it was called Iron Springs Properties. So we want to make sure the record reflects that that's the same project, and that when we look back.
It changed in the process.
Yeah, there weren't two projects. So even though the Planning Commission made a recommendation to approve the Iron Springs Properties minor subdivision, it's the same subdivision as now we're approving the, this Sage Hill Drive subdivision.
Clarification.
Yep.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess we'll go to number two, public hearing discussion and possible approval of the road dedication subdivision application. Chris Hunter subdivision, two parcels located at thirty-nine forty-five West Old Highway ninety-one, Summit, Utah, approximately one hundred and thirty-three point seven nine acres.
This property is located just west of Parowan, between Parowan and Summit, right near the Prairie Dog Property, the second mound Prairie Dog Property, where Allard Ranch subdivision is right across and next to Allard Ranch subdivision. This was a hundred and sixty acre parcel, and it now had been divided off with a minor subdivision of a twenty acre parcel down in the bottom right-hand corner, the southeast corner of the property. So now you see, with the dedication of Old Highway ninety-one, and, and just for information and for the public benefit, we have a lot of this concern in the county where a lot of the old roads, even a state highway that was a, you know, Old Highway ninety-one has been the transportation corridor forever. It has never been a dedicated public road. It's always been just a county right-of-way by, called a public use by right. It existed there, and it had been used, but it had never been acquired or purchased, or, you know. And now, through this process, allows us to dedicate that road and, and then create separate parcels on each side. So this, this, even though it was divided physically by the road, it was still one legal parcel. And so now it's simply being divided and recognizing that the property, the fifty-seven acres on the north, is separate from the seventy-six acre on the south. And that those would be separate legal parcels, and that's what we're doing through this process. Again, just located between Summit and Parowan on Old Highway ninety-one. You can see the parcel here with the star, and it's just divided by the highway. And there is some BLM, you can see, so the, the lots that are on the upper right side over here, this, these, this is the second mound Prairie Dog property. Here's the Allard Ranch subdivision. And DWR, Utah, DWR Winter Range owns all this property right here for winter mule.
Deer habitat.
Deer habitat, and, and so it's, DWR did provide a letter and provided a comment that they recognized that this was, you know, an area that is adjacent to their property, and they're concerned about wildlife for the future, and weren't against the subdivision at all. Just wanted to go on record to say that they're aware of that, and this subdivision is not providing a bunch of lots, and it's not creating a residential subdivision. There's no development occurring there. There may be a home built on the property. The owner is in the process of drilling a well currently. But we don't, didn't feel that would be adverse. Again, here is the exact description of the property, creating the parcels, the acreage that's there, and the twenty acres that was previously taken out. It's just general information. And it is a WMA adjacent to it, BLM adjacent to it, and Allard Ranch. So the deferments for this would be central water and fire suppression. The property is already fenced, and it already has good access. They take, they have a, an access off of Old Highway ninety-one to, of course, both sides, and they're, they've been established and been used for a long time. So unless there are questions?
What was the zone, Reed? Sorry.
The zoning is eight-twenty.
Eight-twenty.
Ready for a public hearing? The Claire, declares the public hearing open. Anybody like to speak to that? Seeing none, we will close. Reed?
Again, this just shows a list for the eight-twenty zone of the roads that are, or the improvements that are required. And the only one there that doesn't exist, or that would be needed at the time of further subdivision or building permit is the water system and fire suppression. So those things would be required at the time of further development. So the Planning Commission recommended approval for this with the deferments of the central water and fire suppression.
Very good. Chair calls for a motion.
I'd move for approval of road dedication subdivision application for Chris Hunter subdivision. Two parcels located at thirty-nine forty-five West Old Highway ninety-one in Summit, Utah. Approximately one hundred and thirty-three point seven nine, seven nine acres. It is located within the legal description provided on the agenda. Just noting that deferments from the Planning Commission have granted of central water improvements will be required at the time of annexation subdivision, or really any building permits, and fire suppression.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, if you would allow me to, again, to just clarify further. For, for everyone's benefit, we generate a lot of confusion sometimes when we talk about deferments, variations, and variances. And I just wanted to clarify a little bit for the record and for the benefit of the public. When we do a deferment, that is allowed by ordinance under the road dedication subdivision ordinance, which means that we're not doing a variation from the ordinance and not saying those improvements won't be required. We're simply deferring them until a later time, a time of annexation subdivision, building permit, when there's a further land use application. We don't have this option to defer for any of the other types of subdivisions. So generally, when you get a subdivision application in, and we're saying, well, you don't need to do fencing on this subdivision, or you don't need to do streetlights because we're gonna maintain, maintain the night sky. We do that through what we call a variation. Under the standards, we, we do a variation that exempts them from that subdivision standard. A variance is a, is a specific land use provision that is a result of hardship created by topography or something unique to the property, not something that the property owner did. And they, and that's done through a special process that Board of Adjustments used to take care of. And now we have a public hearing officer designated in our ordinance to take care of variances. So just for terminology benefit, variance is something that we don't do very often, or never. A variation is a standard that can be exempted because it's not necessary in that area, or it's not desirable, like the lighting and maybe fencing or something. And those cases are the typical, too, that we usually do a variation on. But a deferment is simply kicking the can down the road until such time as that improvement is warranted.
Which really makes sense, because you don't want to do all that now when they're just, yeah.
Not required when it's not necessary.
Necessary, yep, yep.
Thank you.
Okay, very good, Reed. Thanks. Okay, that's two. We'll move on to number three, public comment. Three-minute time limit for speaker for public comment participants. Should not repeat others' comments, only for items not on the agenda. No items related to Commissioner's role as appeals board, and comments should be directed to the commission. No attacks on others' comment, characters.
Good morning. I'm Gianni Julander. I'm the Park Manager at Frontier Homestead State Park. And I want to thank the commission and county leadership for all of the support that we get from the county. The partnerships that we've developed through the community are really important to us. But today, I'm here to tell you about a special exhibit that we have, provided by the Smithsonian Institution and Utah Humanities. It's called H2O Today, and it's all about our relationship with water as a people, as a state, and as a local community. The exhibit is open right now through the end of May. We do have an opening social scheduled this Friday for five-thirty, if you can all make it. I also have a list of additional programs and activities that we're offering in conjunction with the exhibit. All of the additional programming are free to the public, and so I wanted to make you all aware and welcome you to come to those programs. So I'll hand these out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's at five-thirty on Friday? It's in the calendar.
So I, thanks again for your partnerships, and, and thanks for your time today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Seeing none, we'll move on. Number four, presentation of annual pilt payment from the state of Utah.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Kevin Bunnell. I'm the Regional Supervisor for the Division of Wildlife, and happy to be here to make our annual visit to present the county with the pilt payment for the lands that the Division of Wildlife owns in Iron County. And so I have a, a check and a letter for you from our, from our new director. We do have a new director, Jay Shirley. Been on for about six months now, and Jay's anxious to get around and meet everybody. I, I did have a, a chance to take him to the Six County Association of Governments earlier in February. I'd like to get a chance to take him down to the Five County. I've been coordinating with them as well. We were on the agenda once there, and I can't remember what happened. I may, I think they maybe canceled the meeting. It was in December, so.
Kevin, we have that this week, I think.
I think he's wrapping up legislature right now, so.
Okay, so we have that, we actually have that in Cedar City this, this Wednesday, so.
Okay. Remind me who the, who the contact is for Six County. It's Kyle for the Five County, or no, Kyle for Six County, and.
So it'd be Brian Theriot, or, or.
Brian, who's I've been coordinating with. I'll, I'll reach back out.
The other name, Reed, Gary Zabriski. Yeah, so one of those two.
I'll reach back out to Brian and, and get that conversation stoked up again. You know, while I'm here, I'm always happy to, I'd like to give some updates and answer questions. And two things that are always pertinent in Iron County, first, the, the work that we do with the water, the watershed restoration initiative. All the, that's happening here just along the foothills, and a lot of work going on, and more coming, and then a lot that's happening out west. I, I think there's an appreciation for that here, but let me just give you some, some numbers that are pretty amazing of what that, that program's accomplished since it was instituted in two thousand and six. So we're about fifteen years into the watershed restoration initiative. Over that time, and, and it's a, it's a partnership, it's a huge partnership. The Division of Wildlife plays a key role, but we're, you know, by far, we, the only ones that are participating in that space. BLM, Forest Service, private landowners, NRCS, everybody is very helpful there. But through the partnership, two thousand four hundred and fifty total projects completed, over two thousand miles of stream that have been improved, two point two five million acres have been treated during that time. Of that, sixty-three percent's proactive. You know, we do, we do use that program a lot for, for fire rehabilitation, and it was instituted on the Brian Head Fire, but a lot of it's done proactively as well. Let's see, thirteen, almost fourteen million pounds of seed put on the ground over that time. That, that's pretty impressive. Three hundred and sixteen million dollars that have been, come through the program over that fifteen years. Of that, about a hundred million is from the, for state funds. One of the things we're really proud of there is, is we're, have a good record of every dollar that's, that's spent by the state, we're, we're able to leverage into three dollars that, that come from outside funding, funding sources as well. Five thousand five hundred jobs created, and, and estimated seven hundred and seventy-one million dollars of total economic output over the fifteen years. And it's only getting bigger, and, and more partner, the partnership's only getting stronger, and you'll continue to see that work move forward. So I've, I've got that, all those numbers here for you that I'll include with the, with the other information here. The other thing that I wanted to, well, any questions on that before I move on to prairie dogs?
Just a comment, the watershed restoration, just kudos to you guys and all you've done there. It's amazing.
Well, thank you. It was, it was the vision of one of our directors, who unfortunately, shortly after it got started, passed away from cancer. But, but what a legacy.
Yeah.
That's created.
It's fabulous.
Is what it's done for a watershed, eliminating those trees, is, is gotta be huge.
And there's lots more to do, and we'll continue to, continue to work on it. You know, here in the county, good things are happening. I think the, the BLM's getting close on the, on getting NEPA done for Pine Valley, and that'll, that'll really open the floodgates for work to be done out there. We're hoping that, that we clear the court cases in Hamlin Valley and continue to.
It really needs it, too. It is so thick.
Yep.
It is terrible. But we did have a little project on a, on a state, on our own ranch. They did some lofts and scatter. Fabulous. I mean, it's just, and some seed, and some, and some spike put it down. And it, I can't say enough good about. I just wish we could get a little more on the BLM.
Yeah, and, and, and the BLM wants to do it as well. We're, they're just, we just have to clear the legal hurdles. And, and that's one of the reasons.
That's the hard part.
One of the reasons WRA is so successful is because the, the federal agencies are able to use the state contracting system. They put their money, and, and we're able to contract using a, a contracting process that's much, much simpler and, and way less overhead than, than with the federal agencies. And that's, that's hugely attractive to them.
Their red tape is just huge.
Yeah, we're able to put more, more money on the ground and, and in, a lot faster. And so it, it's really the reason why WRA is successful is because of the, the way we're able to get things contracted within weeks and, or months rather than, than years through the, through the federal system, so. I will mention that we coordinated with the BLM on a horse gather that you're probably aware of a couple of weeks ago. My understanding, that was pretty successful. My guys were out flying, doing elk counts just prior to that, and the report that they came back with, and they shared that information with the BLM to help them be successful. But horse numbers were down for the first time in a long time. We counted more elk than we did horses. And our elk numbers are down from what they were several years ago. We're, we're, we're at it, right at an objective in our southwest desert elk management area. It's been over for, for a while, and we've worked hard to get it down. But, but that was, that, that's a real positive to have those numbers down. And they did remove a few off of our wildlife management area as part of that, and we appreciated their help there, so. Prairie dogs. There's good things happening there, too. I, I'm on your agenda to come back at the end of March to, to present a document that we've worked really hard on over the last several years. We've created a Utah Prairie Dog Conservation Strategy. Reed and Mike from the county have been, have been part of the process from, from the very beginning. The goal of that document is to get prairie dogs delisted from under the Endangered Species Act. And so, so just to put the thought in your heads, when I come back in March and, and present and show you what that document is, really what I'm, what I'm hoping for there is a commitment from the county to sign onto the document as part of the MOU. That will really help to have, if we can have Iron County and Garfield County signatories on that document to further illustrate the partnership that we've had for a long time. That'll really help in, one of the, one of the analyses that will be done is the adequacy of regulatory mechanisms. And to have the state and the counties signed onto that document will really help us get that through. Because there, there will be legal challenges, as there always is with anything with the Endangered Species Act. This isn't a process that's gonna happen quickly. I hope, you know, within five or ten years, we can say we've, we've cleared all those hurdles. But it's really, that's the kind of time horizon it's gonna take realistically, so. I look forward to coming back and presenting that. And again, you know, Mike and Reed have, have, they represent the county well. They're very helpful in, in, in bringing those issues forward to make sure that they're accounted for. They're very helpful in bringing those issues forward to make sure that they're accounted for in what we're doing, and we appreciate that. So I look forward to coming back. Any questions on that front or anything else?
Oh, that's good news. There's movement there, and I would absolutely be.
Would be thrilled.
Whatever we can do, absolutely.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. Anything else that I can do for you?
Yeah, I think they're going to do another horse gather, too. They haven't got the NEPA done on that, on the Bible Springs complex also. But they haven't got, it's not on any of their website yet, but I'm hoping.
Have you heard the total number of the last gather, Commissioner Wood?
120, I heard the one day.
And yeah, the last I had heard was 225, and that was before they came on to us. And so I'm guessing it's somewhere in that 250 range, but I'm not 100% sure.
And then they always treat some and turn them back with the fertility, but yeah, I wish they wouldn't do that, but they do, so.
Okay, well, appreciate the partnership that we have. You know, it probably started in maybe not the most productive way with some of the, with the way prairie dogs used to be. But we're in a good place now, and I appreciate that.
Way, way better, and we appreciate that. Thank you for all you do.
I'll hand this to you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go on to five, approval of vehicle sale on a surplus website. 2005 Dodge Durango, 2009 Dodge Charger, Wade. Oh, and three antique fuel pumps.
The Durango, that's from the tourism department. We swapped one out. This one's got some issues with it, so we're going to get it down the road. And then the Charger's from the Sheriff's Department. Not in use anymore, so we're going to put those on there.
I heard it was in not very good shape. Shalon told me.
A lot of the stuff that's coming in is ready to go, so.
Ready to go.
Not getting much in, we're still.
Yeah.
Stuff that's going to be costing us more money. And then the fuel pumps, so we just upgraded our fuel pumps. The ones, was you able to get those pictured?
Uh huh.
So the, two of them, we just upgraded those from, not really. The ones are 1920s, I believe. They had the old glass.
Oh, they're so cool.
And then the other ones, it's probably 40s or 50s models, so.
Pretty neat.
They need to probably.
So yeah, once the Commissioners approve that, we'll go ahead and get them listed.
Listed.
How are you going to do that?
Oh, uh, didn't realize what you were saying.
It's a process you're going to go through.
Right here, yeah, they're right here on the, are those so cool?
Yeah.
I know Dan had pulled those up on eBay or Craigslist or one of them, and they were like $3,500 at that point on those.
If you, ever watch American Pickers?
Yeah, oh yeah.
They find one of those intact, especially with the glass intact, they'd lose their minds, start drooling.
So how will those be, how will they be advertised or whatever?
So we were going to put them on the public surplus auction.
That's a much wider net.
Yes, yes.
Nationwide, so.
We had those horse walkers that will do with the local one.
Local one, yeah.
Yeah, this one we're going to.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
You advertise that, let locals, some of the locals that are interested.
We'll do social media. We'll probably do the two newspapers. We'll do the public notice website, so for those.
On the walker, yeah. Can we get a motion?
Okay, I'll move to approve gen item number five. The vehicle sale on surplus website, 2005 Dodge Durango, 2009 Dodge Charger, and the three antique fuel pumps.
Second.
Moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I was going to say, are you doing the math in your head for the bid?
She just texted me, told me to take her credit card away.
We are to tackle you at the door.
Just think of the shipping you could save.
All right, we approved that one. We'll go on to number six. Discussion and approval of vehicle transfer from the Sheriff's Department to Building and Zoning. A 2011 Ford F-150, Wade.
Do you want me to talk about this one, Wade?
I wondered why you went to sit down again.
It's Monday. All right. So I got a request from Terry Palmer. They're getting a part-time help, and they needed a vehicle, so we were going to have him use this one.
For the code enforcement?
Yeah.
Yeah, very good. Great. Anything else to add to that?
That was it. We talked about maybe doing, depending on how much they use it, you know, because we've got two pooled vehicles. We'll have for the, two trucks that they would be able to use that way, too. So we'll just kind of watch and see how much use it gets, so we don't have one sitting. But he's thinking that it's going to be used quite a bit, so.
I think so, too.
For now, that's, he wanted to add to his fleet that way, and then we had that one to auction, so we'll use it for now.
Okay, yeah, very good. Okay, can I get a motion?
I'll move for approval of the vehicle transfer from the Sheriff's Department to Building and Zoning. It's 2011 Ford F-150 with the VIN number as listed in the agenda.
Second.
Moved in seconded, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, very good. Thanks, Wade. Number seven, discussion and possible defer of taxes on APNA-879-B-4.
Okay, yes, so this individual, and I try to just kind of talk about the property and then the situation, so I don't talk about people specifically. But this is a parcel in Enic. The home is behind on its taxes. The total amount owing is $4,198.37. And then we would add this year's taxes, so it would be $4,627.82. If the Commissioners were to approve it, the total monthly payment would be $420.71 for 11 months. This person is just about through the process of applying for disability, hasn't been able to work.
Since 18, right?
Yeah, yes. And yeah, and the packet has all that information. They've given a letter. Their statement of circumstance, you know, there's PTSD, there are the physical disabilities. They did go and seek financing through a bank and received a letter of denial, which is one of the things we typically require. And they understand. So they got a special abatement, so their taxes had been in the $800 a year range. But now with that special abatement, they're at $429. If they get full disability, it will be zero. So, you know, a lot of it hinges on the disability, but that if they can take care of the stuff, you know, the back stuff, the back owing, then they should be okay moving forward if they get disability because they should have no tax payment once that disability is approved. And, you know, it is a process to kind of get disability, but that's where they are with that. And they feel like either way, they can make the $420 a month payment to bring it current by, before next tax sale. So and again, that's 11 months at $420.71. I didn't have, I didn't have much reservation on this one.
He felt like it was, she really needed it. I know this individual, she was a neighbor and.
I say, you lived closer at one point?
I think it probably is.
I used to mow the lawn for her parents back in the day.
Oh, you did? And we just lived a couple houses from there, so I guess, any discussion? You want to just make a motion?
I'll go ahead and move to approve the deferral of taxes on APNA-879-B-4. And the total would be four, with the new added on, it would be $4,627.82. It'd be $420.71 for 11 months in payments.
I'll second.
Okay, moved in seconded, all in favor? Say aye.
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 Commissioner Wood, I will get you that agreement.
To sign?
Yeah.
Okay.
And you'll get her signed?
Yeah, oh yeah.
If you just do it before March 15th, then we won't have to put that $350 fee.
We, yeah, we will. I'll get it the next few days. Yeah. She's not very mobile, and so I've been running stuff to her house.
So we can pull it off before that fee goes.
Yep.
Thanks, Nicole. Okey dokey. We are going to go to personnel. We'll come back to number eight in a few minutes, but Jennifer?
Hello again. In the Sheriff's Office Patrol, at the request of Lieutenant Jeff Humphries, a possible approval for temporary interim pay for Deputy Cam Nail beginning February 20th, 2022, with the intent to end on the pay period upon the return of the corporal who is out on leave. Also in the Sheriff's Office Patrol, Lindsay Kim was selected from the most recent competitive recruiting process to backfill the vacant part-time tech, evidence tech position effective 2/28/2022. And then I can finish the other two if you want to do them all together.
Yeah, let's just do them all together.
Sure. In the Assessor's Office, Taylor Beaumont was selected from the most recent competitive recruiting process to fill the newly approved part-time Parwan DMV title and registration position, effective date 2/28/2022. And in the Council on Aging Department, Doug Fox was selected to fill the newly approved part-time Parwan DMV Mails on Wheels Driver effective February 28th, 2022.
Okay, I'll call for a motion.
I would move for approval of the personnel advancements as outlined by our HR Director, Jennifer.
Second.
Good. Moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Okay, we've got a number, we'll go back to number eight.
So I think on that one, the individual that's going to come visit with us for that close session won't be here until 1:00. Is that correct, Dan?
So should we adjourn?
Well, I was going to suggest that we, do nondelegated and get that board that Paul has.
Let's do that.
So I, in regards to the county boards, then I just, I explained the situation with Derek Morton, and I'll just, I'll make a motion to approve Derek Morton to serve on the Five County Association of Government Human Services Council.
I'll second it.
Moved in seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Morton, M-O-R-T-O-N.
There was a vote there, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, all of us voted, yep. Anything on, any other boards? Prairie dog matters. We've kind of discussed that a little bit.
So yeah, maybe, I wonder if you declare a recess till 1:00 PM?
All right, we'll declare a recess till 1:00 PM. We'll come back and have our closed session.